Okay, we'll call this meeting in order of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors, December the 3rd, 2019. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Here.
Works?
Here.
Drilka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Do you, please, join us in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item one is agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Any questions or comments on the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item two, public comments. Anybody like speak to the board this time, it's not an agenda item. Seeing none, we will move on to years of service to employees of twenty or more years of service. Mr. Veder?
We have one today. It's for William E. Locke from the sheriff's office for forty years of service.
Wow.
Wow.
Certainly offer a congratulation.
This could be your day and he appreciates it.
Okay. Thank you. And that was it, huh, Graham?
That was it.
Okay. Item four is claims and payments. Resolution A, James?
Claims came out to seventy-six thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and forty-eight cents. It was a short week. Really just kind of highlights, secondary roads came in at twenty-two thousand five forty thirteen, health departments eighty-eight thousand three ninety-six, and then IT at twenty thousand six ninety-nine. So, other than that, everything else looked normal.
Move through proof.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the resolution? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Works?
Yes.
Drilka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Item five, receiving project updates from department heads and/or elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. I wanted to give you an update on the work going on on the Cedar River Bridge out on west Cedar Wapsit Road. PCI does have a bridge crew on site now, and they are working on what will be the east abutment and then the first east pile. They are doing some pile driving on the east abutment site where they will be shortly this week. And then in the middle of the river, they are getting, driving some sheet piles so that they can build the cofferdam, and then that will allow them to work in the river. So, we do expect them to be on site now. We're hopeful that they are here to stay to really do a lot of work on the bridge this winter. In other news, the Gilbertville shop, we're just a few days away from being able to get and to relocate inside the building. We're waiting on a few windows to be installed, but I believe that's the only thing. We're hoping by the end of this week that we are working out of that shop then. And then lastly, we have completed ditch cleaning for the year. This year, we got about two point eight or two point, two point seven or two point eight miles of ditch cleaned out. That's about an average year for us, just due to the weather this year. It's been cold and then not cold, so we will wrap up that activity today. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on to minutes approved for November the 26th, 2019.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item seven is consent agenda be made with a single resolution.
Second.
Is there any questions on the consent? Roll call, please.
Works?
Yes.
Drilka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Item eight, other business. Motion to approve and place on file the 2020 legislative issues and priorities submitted by Urban County Coalition. Larry, are you gonna address this?
Morning.
Good morning. We just want to make sure that we give you, give you folks an opportunity to ask questions. I know that all of you are not on the Urban County Coalition, but I'd just like to run through these fairly quickly, and if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to take them. The commercial property tax backfill, that's back on the agenda or the priorities this year, simply because every year we hear that the legislature is gonna make, believes it's time to either roll this back or eliminate it completely. So, as those of you who may remember that, I think back in, what was it, 2013? There was a commercial property valuation rollback to ninety percent, and in, there were several classes of property that experienced rollbacks, but we received a backfill by, I mean, local municipalities, counties, and cities received a rollback to compensate them for the loss of some of that revenue. Now, there was never a sunset put on this, and the legislature didn't indicate at the time that it planned on sunsetting it, but now we're hearing, well, not now, for the past two or three years, we've been hearing that, you know, we never really meant this to go on forever, and that you should have, you know, experienced property tax growth to grow out of this. So, we're constantly gonna be vigilant this year for attempts to roll this back. Now, one of the proposals that we started hearing a little bit about last year, that never made its way into a piece of legislation, or frankly, even a written form, was this deals with one of our priorities, our next priority, is that one of the possibilities that the legislature was looking at for a funding source would be to phase out the property tax backfill and use that money to buy down the mental health levy. So, we think that's kind of the very definition of robbing Peter to pay Paul. So, we're, that's not something the Urban County Coalition would have supported last year and probably won't support going forward. So, any questions about the property tax backfill?
TJ, have, since 2013, has Black Hawk County seen any growth in commercial?
Commercial, no, not much.
I know there's some counties that have, but we're one of the counties that really...
Basically new construction.
Right.
And actually, Tom, I think probably the vast majority of the counties have not seen any growth at all. And, I mean, there's, you know, a handful of those really growing communities, but yeah, the vast majority are not.
Yeah.
And unfortunate legislators will look at the statewide numbers and say, well, look at that growth, but it's, you know, pockets in the state.
Mental health funding, this is, this has been a priority of Urban County Coalition for a number of years. What we're looking for in this is a method of long-term sustainable funding for mental health programs. This is particularly important considering in the past couple of years, the legislature has seen fit to add responsibilities to regions that have made it more challenging to sort of deal with the resources that are currently available. And I think that, well, the Urban County Coalition has made it really clear at the legislature that, you know, regions are fully prepared to be partners in funding mental health, both adult and children, but it's, this is not something that we're gonna stand by and let you continue to sort of heap responsibilities onto the backs of county supervisors and local property taxpayers without sort of, at some point, crying uncle. And I think with the passage of the Children's Mental Health Bill, which, which by the way was, it's a good bill, and I think provides the outline of some needed infrastructure for providing children's mental health services, I think that we've, we've reached the point where regions kind of have to cry uncle. Many counties are limited by either a dollar cap or a levy cap in the additional funds that they are able to raise to provide these programs, and simply to allow the state to continue to shift responsibilities from the Department of Human Services and Managed Care onto the backs of local property taxpayers is unacceptable. So, that's, that's kind of covers both children and adult mental health. Both of these simply express a willingness to be a part, on behalf of the Urban County Coalition and the regions that you guys represent, a willingness to be a partner in funding these services, certainly in providing these services, but at the end of the day, we cannot, we cannot allow the state to continue to sort of shift responsibilities from state coffers onto, on the backs of local property taxpayers. And we see that over and over again, both with adding new core services and forcing regions to pick up the delta on certain Medicaid services. So, you know, that's, those are gonna be some of our focuses when it comes to mental health.
And the other half of that is, as you all know, last year, when the legislature for both cities and counties passed that hundred and two percent cap on growth, you know, so you have this thing where you're sliding over more responsibility, but then you're restricting the ability to actually respond to it in terms of levies that you all have. So, I mean, you've got those two pieces in tandem, and, you know, it's obvious that a lot of legislators just have no clue about local government at all in terms of how it functions. So, it, you know, that's, that's part of what we try to do with you all to keep educating them on, you can't have it both ways, so.
Any questions on either adult or children's mental health? Unfunded and underfunded mandates, we continue to chip away at these. I know we've made some tiny little bits of progress when it comes to some publication costs and things like that, but at the end of the day, I, I will continue to sort of ask, when we talk to boards of supervisors in the Urban County Coalition, you guys are beginning, I think, your budget process, either if you haven't already begun at least thinking about it, you're gonna begin it pretty soon. We would ask you to highlight and sort of do your best to make public those areas where you don't have a lot of discretion in how you spend the money that you have to raise from property taxes, and that you highlight those to your constituents and publicly when you run across areas of your budget where you are mandated to spend funds by the state. So, we would just ask you to sort of keep an eye on those, maybe do what you can to keep track of them, because we're gonna, at some point, I think during the legislature, you're gonna want some sort of examples of that to provide the legislators when it comes across, when it comes across your desk.
And James, just on the finance side, one of the pieces supervisor Ann McDonough from Dubuque brought up an issue, and, you know, we'll leave the politically charged term of climate change out of it, but as you all are responding to more natural disasters, you know, particularly flooding and that sort of thing, what we're trying to do is actually identify some of those emerging costs that historically you've not really dealt with or very, you know, rarely dealt with, particularly like roads, you know, accessing gravel supply, some of those types of things. We're trying to identify what those are, because under that unfunded and underfunded area, that's kind of an emerging one that's just kind of under the radar, and Ann was bringing it up, and obviously Dubuque with some of its hills have probably more severe issues, but anything in that area, go ahead and kind of segregate that as well, because we want to be educating legislators on, you know, some of these other emerging unfunded mandates.
EMS services, we're trying to work with the legislature to find some methods to better fund rural EMS services. We know, we do know that's a challenge. I think last year, we advanced, we helped advance the bill fairly far through the process that would have allowed sort of townships to vote on whether or not they wanted to raise a levy to pay for these services, but there are groups out there that are opposed to raising property taxes for whatever reason, and, you know, I think that unless and until we can, we can find a way to sort of supplement this funding for, without property taxes, I think we'll still run into those, run into those, but we'll, we'll make sure that, we'll make sure that the legislature understands that, you know, even in urban counties, there is a struggle getting, getting and keeping volunteers for rural EMS services, you know. That, I mean, I think last year, you know, we were telling the story of, you know, look, if we approached you with a volunteer opportunity that would cost you, you know, initially a couple of thousand dollars to get trained and maybe a few hundred dollars a year to maintain your certification and to give up all of your nights and potentially all of your weekends, I mean, that, that sounds like a less and less attractive opportunity in that if we could find a way to help with some training and some funding of some of the equipment, I think that we could reverse some of the trends of being, making it difficult to get volunteers. So, any question, it's an unfunded mandate EMS services?
EMS services, that would be something I would think may be a good discussion with Farm Bureau when we have our annual Farm Bureau meeting to have a discussion like that.
Yeah, that would, that'd be great, if they could come to the table and maybe offer some solutions, instead of just saying that they don't want people to vote, to be able to vote, on whether or not they want these services, that would certainly be helpful.
Thank you.
Ipers, we just want to make sure that the state legislature is cognizant of, you know, what a quality program Ipers is and how well-funded it is compared to other pension, pensions across the state, and kind of this, in a nutshell, I think the Urban County Coalition position on this is if it ain't broke, don't fix it, so. Water quality, we're supporting the, the passage of the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Fund, that's raising the sales tax three eighths of a cent, unless that there are significant changes to the formula. I do know that there are, there are groups in the legislature that, should something like this be considered, and I'm not convinced that it will be, that they would only consider this if there were dramatic changes to the allocation formula, and those would include things like, and there are no concrete proposals right now, so this, this is all speculation, but things like moving the DNR off-budget into Iowa Water and Land Legacy Fund, prohibiting the DNR from acquiring public lands or any, you know, any other lands, so things like that, that I think that, should something like this be considered, I think both of those are strong contenders for me included in a new funding formula. Any questions?
I'd just add that the state needs to do something to support the watershed management authorities that they've created, because there's currently no funding mechanism for those, and so most of them across the state are fledgling. The ones that are doing well are ones that were lucky enough to get federal grants, and they have staff, and, but those grants run up, and we need some kind of sustainable funding formula that the state needs to be a partner in.
Right. Yeah, hopefully, like I said, that's one of the things that we'd advocate, I think, is an Urban County Coalition to make sure that was included in any allocation formulas, that watershed management authorities have been really important and across the state in sort of identifying problem areas, and with the limited resources that they have, I don't know that they're able to do a great deal, but they've done some really excellent research, so. Infrastructure, this goes to what, this goes to what Larry was mentioning earlier, so we didn't include it under the unfunded mandates. This is the increasing challenges that counties are facing in maintaining infrastructure with, given sort of catastrophic weather events, and that some of those, I mean, those things are difficult to budget for, so we'd be advocating, you know, allowing the, allowing counties to be a little bit more creative in the way that they use, that they use road funds and that they can, allowing them to set some of those aside, sort of planning for the worst. Opioid epidemic, this is proposing some, some legislatures, or some changes to the way that Iowa deals with this. Tax credits, I think we keep hearing that there's an overhaul of tax credit programs coming, and we're, we have yet to see it, but we want to make sure that those tax credits that your communities use are preserved. Tax increment financing, want to make sure that the counties maybe have a little, little bit stronger of a voice in how these things are, are used and... Payment in lieu of taxes, I know this is a particular, kind of a, an interesting phenomenon when it comes to counties, is that not all, and payment in lieu of tax agreements are struck with organizations, that there is not always a sharing of those revenues between all taxing jurisdictions. Want to make sure that when those agreements are entered into, that counties kind of are, counties are at the table. Medicaid reimbursement to county-owned facilities, REAP, county bonding, those are things we've dealt with in past years. Emergency Management Agency funding, early voting, updating of the state's noxious weed laws. I know that's one of the things that we're still sort of talking about, because I know that there was a law passed last year. Larry, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, the noxious weed law was updated, but I think the, the goal is to actually move more of it to administrative rule process, so that instead of periodically lobbying the legislature to add invasive species, that type thing, that by rule, the agent, the DNR can actually identify and give that direction to the counties. So, it would allow you all to be able to respond much quicker to, you know, newer invasive species that are not on the official list. So, that's, that's kind of an ongoing effort to make that adjustment on the new law.
Maintaining jurisdiction of children in juvenile court, manufactured housing communities, alternative project delivery, this is something that has sort of popped up occasionally, and what we're trying to accomplish in this is to provide, if you remember, I think, two years ago, or three years ago, there was a state law that had passed that eliminated the local jurisdiction's ability to use lease purchase, and what we'd like to get back to is a scenario where local boards of supervisors can determine, you know, with the experts on their staff, the best methods of project delivery for their projects and their constituents. So, this is one of those struggles that we continually have with the legislature, and that is reminding them that all of you are elected officials, and all of you are responsible to your constituencies for the way that you vote, and if your constituents don't like the decisions that you make, they have recourse. So, somehow, we're trying, trying to our best to make sure that the state legislature doesn't sort of continue in its attitude that sometimes they have to protect local taxpayers from you all and the decisions that you make, so. Proper?
And that alternative project delivery, that's part of a much broader coalition. It spans, it's an interesting group. It spans everything from, you know, the building trades to public entities, you know, private sector construction, the, or mechanical contractors. Actually, on the whole issue that Gary was talking about in terms of lease purchase a few years ago, there's basically two groups that pushed that, got it done a couple of years ago, and took, took away your ability to do that, and that was the road builders, even though they were exempt from it, and then also the engineers. And, and I don't mean the county engineers, but the engineering society. And the frustration is that it was definitely a political power play, and you've got a very broad group trying to get this alternative delivery piece, and I believe if I've got the number right, I think Iowa's like one of just a handful of states, and it may be down to one or two, that do not allow local government to have access to this tool. So, it's not like we're trying to break new ground, this is something that's been done all over the country and been done very successfully. So, it, that's, that's the background behind that, adopting that in terms of this priority, so.
Property definitions, we're just asking for a more clear definition of what constitutes a farm for the purpose of property tax. Calculations, master matrix, allowing county boards at their discretion to hold a public hearing before a master matrix, a project meets master matrix, definitions are approved. That way, you could, you could hold an additional public hearing if you so desire. Ban the box, and this is removing questions about criminal records from, from public employment applications, so. Any questions?
Did you want to expand on that just a little bit?
Yes.
I guess in what provided the group to...
I think the ban the box piece, and obviously, there's been, particularly in this county, some pretty public discussion, this is a really narrowly construed piece. It targets only public sector employers, and it basically takes the criminal background box to check off the application form.
Off the initial application.
The initial application. Then, from that point on, during interviews, background checks, everything else, is your entirety free, because, you know, as you all know, there's, there's both, you know, within the county side, school side, and city side, there's jobs that, by state law, a person with a criminal background cannot be involved with. So, the idea is just to allow people to get past the initial application piece, and then at least explain the context for whatever criminal activity they had. So, this is a much more narrowly constructed than the other ones that have been thrown out there trying to impact private sector, that type of thing, so. It's really just the public sector. There was two bills introduced bipartisan in the House this year, and in the public hearing, as they went through, worked through it, they realized that at least on initially, the gain would be to have, have this done by the public sector as kind of to model it for the private sector. And, you know, as we've shared with, with the urban county representatives, it's, again, this is an interesting coalition. I mean, you obviously have some public sector folks, you've got the criminal justice reform types, and you also have the Koch brothers that are all holding hands in this thing, saying, let's, let's get this done. So, it, it'll, it'll be a slow go. I know, I believe that, it was a question came up the other day in terms of restoring felony rights, and, you know, that piece has been proposed by the governor. I believe the House has passed that. It'll be a, you know, two-session process to get that done, but right now, it's kind of stalled in the Senate over what, what defines serving of sentence, that type of thing, so. But this is simply a very narrowly construed piece here.
Questions?
I mean, I'm much, I'm in favor of a more broad approach to it, because I think what Waterloo did was, was good. I think that we should follow suit here at the county, and I'll really kind of push the envelope and challenge the state on, on local control issues and what best serves our constituency. I also prefer when we kind of refer to it as the second chance, rather than ban the box, because I think that confuses a lot of people, because they think that you completely take the question out, whereas you still have, right after you get past that initial interview or after a job offer is made...
Right.
...that you can still do all the necessary checks and that all the necessary protections are in there for the, for the positions that need those protections, whether it's working with children or, or working with financial transactions. So, I think a lot of people get confused about what this, what this really means, but it's just about getting people past that initial step and, you know, a fair chance at, you know, redeeming themselves.
And there was some discussion on that, too, the different terminology that could be used, and I think it went back to ban the box, just for identifying language, but...
I think the reason that we stuck, we kind of stuck with ban the box is that's the term that people know, and legislatively, that's when you're talking to legislators, that that's kind of what they know, and if you start changing the term, then you get the question, does it mean, does it mean something different? Okay. So, that's kind of why we stuck with that.
It's a slow learning curve up there.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Maybe steps.
Anybody else got any questions?
Thank you.
We certainly thank you for all the information and...
Thank you.
I was just gonna ask where we're at as far as the other urban counties, the coalitions. I know today, like I said, we're asking for our support of these and...
Yeah, I think that most everyone else has, either is in the process or, or has, has approved this. I mean, I think we're gonna have a call on Friday to kind of get an update, so I think we'll have a, we'll have a better chance, or we'll have a better, better information about where people are on, on Wednesday.
But for the most part, I think you've already presented it to some groups.
Yeah, we've already presented it to some groups, and yeah, it's, this'll, this'll be, I think, there may be some, like, some grammatical changes and some wording changes, but the substance of the issues from now on won't change. There, we're past the point with the Urban County Coalition where anybody can add or take away an issue, so if you see a document in the future and it looks a little different, it won't be substantively different. The issues will all be the same, they'll just be, there may be some rephrasing for clarity, there may be, I noticed a couple of typos that we're gonna fix, so... that we're gonna fix, so that, those will be the documents that you'll see in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion on this grant? So moved?
Second.
Is there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Okay. 9A is talking about bonds, we got A, B, C, D. James, you want to go over us before we take each one of these?
Yeah, I'll just actually talk a little bit about all of them rather than kind of splitting them.
That's fine.
So, as you know, there was a publication air, so A and B are actually just redoing what we've already done, just to, more specifically, A was authorizing, ratifying, and confirming the advertisement of sale, we had, we read advertised on the 26th of November, and then B is just accepting that final bid from FHN, FHN Financial. So, A and B are just kind of redos, just to kind of get us on the same path, and then C is appointing UMB Bank of West of Moyn to serve as the paying agent, that's just to transfer, authorizing them for the transfer agent, and then D is approving all of the transactions and kind of finalizing bonds, so.
Board, you got any questions on that? So, basically, we're just redoing some because of the publication date. Okay? Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, this would be the resolution A, 9A, roll call please.
Jelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Yes. And resolution B, this is directing the sale.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Roll call please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Yes. And item C, resolution, appointing UMB Bank...
So moved.
Paying agent.
Second.
Any questions on this one? Roll call please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Yes.
And the last one, item D is authorized providing for the issuance of 8,935,000 GO bonds.
Second.
Okay. Roll call please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Anything else, James?
Nope.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing changed, we're all on the same timeline, same interest rates, same profit, nothing changed.
Very good, okay, moving on to item 10, it's a closed session. This is a resolution pursuant to the provisions of the Iowa Open Meetings Law. The Blackout County Board of Supervisors shall proceed into closed session to discuss courthouse security and to discuss information contained in records in the custody of a governmental body that are confidential. This pursuant to section 22.750 in the Iowa Code 21.5K.
So moved.
Second. Okay, roll call please.
Jelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, we are back into regular session, it's 10:19. I need a motion to adjourn the Board of Supervisors in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, and do we have any reports or information from the board at this time? Chris?
I'll just remind the public and everybody that I'm hosting the fundraiser for the 19th Amendment Centennial Committee that's constructing the statues in, at the Cedar Falls Women's Club, and then here at the Blackout County Courthouse, so that fundraiser is a holiday-themed fundraiser at 6 o'clock at my home this Saturday, and the public that wishes to attend can just reach out and get more information from me.
Free drinks?
Thank you.
It's a $25 special donation.
I mean, that's not free.
It's a fundraiser.
So, please don't drink $25 worth.
Okay, thank you for that, is there anything else, Chris?
That's it.
Craig?
Nope.
Dan?
No.
Linda?
No thanks.
Okay, then with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned, thank you.